Good evening, everyone.
Wow, today.
Yeah. All right, open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views or matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but ought to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in high school in Lynn Public Schools District and may discuss their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration and attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. Anyone here for open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic, and we will close the open mic portion of the meeting and move into the seventeenth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Dugan, absent. Member Gaetlie, present. Member Pena, present. Member Reed, present. Member Sadowite, present. Mayor Nicholson, present.
For those who are here, please join me and rise and salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have minutes.
I make a motion to approve the policy subcommittees from October 30th and the sixteenth regular meeting, minutes on October 30th.
Second.
Honorable Chair.
Aye.
Post. Nice to have it. Next, we have appointments.
Thank you. As we move through this transition, my focus is on stability, belonging, and excellent instruction in every classroom. In order to achieve that, we need a complete leadership team in place. My appointment as interim superintendent created a vacancy in the deputy superintendent's secondary role, a position that is essential to supporting our nine secondary schools, guiding major initiatives, and keeping our strategic priorities on track. I am appointing Lori Gallivan, a highly respected leader who has dedicated nearly three decades to public education, having started that auspicious career right here in Lynn. Lori brings a rare combination of systems-level expertise, instructional depth, and genuine care for the Lynn community. This appointment does not expand our team. It restores the leadership capacity we had before my appointment and that we need to stay grounded, coherent, and focused on what matters most: our students, teachers, and their learning happening every day in the Lynn Public Schools. So I would like to introduce Lori Gallivan. Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you. Next, we have a presentation on the PRISM grant status.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Winslow. I'm the Assistant Director of Curriculum Instruction for ELA and Reading. Due to my voice, I'm not sick, but with laryngitis. My colleague and partner will be doing the bulk of the presentation, so we're thrilled to be here with all of you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Nicholson, Superintendent Cohen, respected members of the Lynn School Committee and the greater Lynn community. Thank you so much for the invitation to be here this evening and to share this exciting news and updates with you. So, our objectives for this evening are to identify the importance, goals, and the timeline of the PRISM grant process, to describe the PRISM implementation and planning process, which included leadership team development, to explain professional learning and high dosage tutoring strategy for the first phase of our implementation, and to illustrate the benefits of the intersection of high dosage tutoring and family engagement. So the agenda that we'll be following this evening includes sharing with you our PRISM goals and the awards that we've received from DESI, our PRISM timeline of planning and action steps, the creation and the work of the PRISM leadership team, our professional learning strategy, our high dosage tutoring strategy, which is Springboard Collaborative, family engagement, and next steps. So as you know, high-quality literacy instruction is a really high priority right now. Coming out of COVID, we do have work to do together, and DESI responded to this need by launching this grant. Fifteen districts in the state of Massachusetts were awarded with this really exciting opportunity, and I am really proud to share with you that Lynn Public Schools was awarded the highest amount in the state, which is $1.8 million. So, as Michelle said, this was collaborative, just because I'm the one speaking. We've done this work together, and we're really, really excited to share it. So some of these are the goals direct from DESI that were set by the Department of Education for this grant, so all districts that are participating in this opportunity share these goals. So the first goal is an early literacy screening assessment goal. So it's to have eighty percent of students in the PRISM One cohort to meet reading benchmarks by the end of each grade in K-3, and to reduce disparities in the percentage of students in the PRISM One cohort meeting reading benchmarks annually. The other PRISM goal is about grade-three ELA MCAS. So we're looking for a thirty-three percent increase in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in the PRISM One cohort, and to reduce disparities in the percentage of students in the PRISM One cohort meeting or exceeding those expectations annually. So this work did begin last year, so we wanted to just share a timeline to kind of take you through where we've been, and we're really excited to continue to share where we're going as this work develops. In November of 2024, we submitted our initial application. In January of 2025, we were awarded $30,000 for Year One, which was primarily for planning. So the $30,000 that we received last year was used to create the leadership team and begin the vision together. In May of 2025, we had a literacy system scan, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a future slide, but it was an opportunity to collect data in Lynn Public Schools' classrooms, preschool through second, um, through third grade, excuse me. In May of 2025, we launched said leadership team. In June of 2025, we collaborated with DESI, EEC, and Leadership to solidify planning. In June of 2025, we had our initial action planning meeting, so that leadership team came together in person to really begin that work together. In July of 2025, as mentioned earlier, we were awarded 1.8 for Year Two, which was really exciting. We were actually in the middle of professional development when we found out, so it was like a really exciting moment. We were all together. In August of 2025, TNTP, who are our coaches that are paid for by the grant, supported the collaboration with stakeholders to streamline our planning. In September of 2025, we established professional learning and preschool curriculum review plans. In October of 2025, the team returned for a progress monitoring data collection visit, so that initial literacy system scan that occurred in May, we will continue to progress monitor as we go. What was really exciting about the visit in October is that not only were we able to visit Lynn Public School classrooms, we also visited two of our community-based organizations as well. And in November 2025, just very recently, we were really excited to land on the decision to implement Springboard Collaborative tutoring, which I'll talk a little bit more about later. Every photo that you see here in this presentation tonight was taken by me because I used to, I had the opportunity to teach it, but I'll get into that later. So for our collaboration and planning, like I mentioned, we had a literacy system scan. That was, all that data was collected via teacher focus groups, leader interviews, teacher and leader surveys, and classroom observations. We developed the PRISM leadership team, which is comprised of a diverse group of stakeholders, including teachers from Lynn Public Schools and community-based organizations. And like I mentioned, we had our action planning meeting with TNTP and the leadership team. So that literacy system scan provided us with the necessary data to determine the current status of literacy instruction happening in pre-K-3 right now, and it led to the progress monitoring visits. We had our first one in October, and we will have additional visits in February and May. Our PRISM leadership team is currently comprised of forty-five members from nineteen elementary schools. Those members include community-based organization and Lynn Public School teachers, reading teachers, special education, multilingual education, principals, CITs, program specialists, assistant directors, members of executive leadership, and our TNTP consultants. These members play a pivotal role in shaping and advancing the early literacy goals that we have in our district, and we are so thankful to have the members that we do, and we're so excited to continue this work with them. As we develop this team, we sought out building principals' input to select these members to be as representative as possible, and as mentioned, that does include our two-partner CBOs, which are the Real Program and the Greg House Preschool. So in order to collaborate and strengthen the approaches that we take to early education citywide, it is really important that we include our CBOs in this process. Our professional learning strategy, we approach that by having our leadership team participate in asynchronous work to build their background knowledge. So together, Michelle, I, and our coaches comprised some asynchronous work and some work we did together to make everybody on the same page about where we've been for Lynn Public Schools literacy and where we plan to go. We also developed a professional learning plan for teachers and leaders in response to the data collected at the literacy system scan, and we established our preschool curriculum review team. We are going to be trained in the AIRS system, starting, I think, next Monday, and then once we go through that training, we will take that process on of the curriculum review. As mentioned earlier, we chose a high dosage tutoring strategy, so we had an opportunity to really make sure that direct student services were a part of the money that we received for this opportunity. So we chose to go with the high dosage tutoring, and our ongoing collaboration resulted in allocating 1.3 million to direct student services. That was per DESI's recommendation of how to use the money. And as mentioned, we chose Springboard Collaborative, which was chosen as our vendor. Just to tell you a little bit more about Springboard, and I'm happy to answer any more questions later, the ratios are excellent. It's ten students to one teacher. The model is to run two small groups, including independent and focused practice. And one really amazing thing about this opportunity is that Springboard directly provides professional development to our teachers, not only for the programs that they implement, but I actually believe that it's a pipeline to leadership. Sorry, I'm going. Springboard Collaborative closes the literacy gap by closing the gap between home and school. It coaches educators and parents to help kids learn to read by fourth grade. So PRISM, just for clarity, and the funding, is funding a hundred percent this year of this opportunity. It will fund seventy-five percent in FY27, fifty percent in FY28, and twenty-five percent in FY29. And I'm really excited to share with you that this spring, 1,000 students in grades K-3 will be served by LPS teachers for this ten-week tutoring program. So like I said, I did have the opportunity, as I used to be a kindergarten teacher here in the district before I took on this position, so I was actually lucky enough to be a teacher. I later then was a program lead, so I really was part of this experience and on the ground, so this is near and dear to my heart, and I really am so excited that we are able to get back into this opportunity. As you see here, these are just some of the materials. So up in the top-left corner, those are books provided by the company. It's part of the fee that we pay, and they also provide, it's like a fun fund, to create family and student engagement. So you see the snacks, you see the kids in the background getting ready for the workshop. In the bottom, in the center, you see more books and handouts with reading tips translated in families' native languages to try to reach as many people as possible. And like I said, family engagement is such a huge part of this program, and it's what really set it apart for me as an educator. It was something I had never experienced, and being able to be part of it, be trained, and to implement it, like I said, it was just incredible. This is just a quote from Springboard's website that I feel like really illustrates their mission. "At Springboard Collaborative, we believe that family educator collaboration is the most joyful, culturally-affirming, and cost-effective way to give kids access to high-quality instructional time." And as you see there, so that is one of our family engagement workshops. That's actually when I met Michelle. She came as the Assistant Director of ELA to see my program as a program leader. Can I say it? And she cried, which for me, as a teacher, I was like, oh my goodness, guys, Michelle Winslow cried. I think, I think we made a great impact, so obviously that's just like a silly story, but I did want to share it with you, you know, because even for me as a teacher, I was able to feel so successful.
It's an extremely powerful model that we're excited to bring back to the districts.
Yeah, and seeing families, you know, in classrooms, sitting in desks, sitting on the floor, engaging with their students at their students' level, it was just such a beautiful thing, so I can't wait to be here in the spring. So again, just a few more pictures of students and families working together. I just want to tell you a little bit more information about how the family engagement piece works. So the model begins with a meeting called the Family Huddle, which is to get to know the students and their reading goals. So it's a meeting in person with the student and the parent, and we provide translation if needed. After that, we set a trajectory for the learning goals for the students based on their DIBBLES outcomes, and throughout the ten-week program, there are four family workshops where parents learn reading tips and strategies that they can use at home with their students. So different things like take a book walk, asking children questions to clarify their understanding, learning how to scoop to promote fluency, like different things like that. And then there's just one more. As you can see, these are a couple of the educators that were on my team, and I mean, I think their smiles really speak for themselves. It's really nice the way the company provides the swag and, you know, the backpacks and all the materials because it does help with buy-in and it does help with investment. One really cute thing that they had were little bracelets that said on them, "Springboard Collaborative, meeting tomorrow," and we would give them to the children the day before the meeting, so it's not a paper, it's not something they can lose. It's on their wrist, they go home, their homework is to wave it around, let their parents know, and to make sure that they come. So I am really excited that I can be a resource to the teachers that help us to implement this program because I've done it myself. So if you can't tell, we're really excited about this, and thank you so much for your time and your attention. Does anyone have questions?
Member Pena.
Thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it. Pretty detailed. You must have sat in a lot of school committee meetings because every time I had a question, you had the answer right away. I had one question, well, I had several, and you answered them as you did your presentation. The data that you collected in October, did it show, what did it show? Are we progressing, are we hitting our target, or are we have, I mean, this is new.
Yeah.
We have work to do, but what did the data show?
The data showed, you know, where we're strong and where we're challenged, and I think that, you know, our responsibility is to respond to that data. We work with our coaches. We have four domains that we're looking at in partnership with not only executive leadership, but our leadership team that I showed you earlier. So we're working together in subcommittees to meet the needs of all of those different goals.
Does it look like we're meeting our needs? Are we getting there?
We're on our way, yeah.
On our way, okay. And the other question, part of your leadership team, did you have any, did you include any PTOs, any, did you try to have some parent engagement? I know you have parent engagement with the activities, which is very important, and in different languages, and creating the leadership team, did you include any PTOs or?
So we do have our community-based organizations, but that's a really great idea that we could actually think about adding, yeah.
The Real Program's awesome, I know you and Greg House, I mean, they're really great.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to get a little, some of the PTOs because they work directly with a lot of the families in the concern zone.
Yeah.
Be nice, but I mean, thank you, thank you overall, and I know you're excited, and I was excited watching, I can see the passion coming from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, congratulations on the grant, and thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you to the entire LPS family for the exciting progress at work, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, budget update and outlook for school year '27.
It's in the count. I'm good for it. If it balances, I'm sorry. I'll talk to my treasurer. It was a busy season.
Okay, thank you. Let's get this a little closer. All right. Good evening, everyone. I am here to present a high-level overview of the budget process for FY27. The FY27 budget is more than a financial plan. It is a blueprint for equity, innovation, and excellence. Together, the city, school committee, and community ensure that every investment leads to meaningful results for Lynn's children. Our FY27 budget process ensures every dollar advances student achievement and reflects Lynn's shared values of inclusiveness, collaboration, and accountability. The process spans from fall 2025 through spring 2026, integrating community voice, fiscal responsibility, and instructional priorities. Tonight, I will review with you the timeline and the fiscal context. Our FY27 budget development process is designed to ensure every dollar advances student success, supports our educators, and reflects Lynn's shared values. These values guide not just what we fund, but how we fund it. Inclusiveness means voice, shape priorities. Shared responsibility means transparent decision-making, and high expectations means, excuse me? High expectation means every investment must yield clear outcomes for students. As you can see here, in addition to our core values, are additional guiding principles of creative partnerships, equitable allocation, funding alignment, and stakeholder input. My commitment to you is to continue the great work we have started in building trusting partnerships by soliciting feedback and incorporating voices in strengthening instruction. Our budget isn't just a financial tool, it's a moral document that reflects our values and priorities as a district. Each investment ties directly to one of the core values and strategic priorities. In this image, you will notice educator support as a key driver to decision-making. This driver aligns with our DSP priority area number two: ensure LPS educators are diverse, highly qualified, well-resourced, and supported to serve LPS students. Here is the timeline for this fall. As you can see, we are already underway with calculating the official school enrollment number that will drive next year's funding stream. Principals and directors have attended training on how to use the Alloview platform. Quickly, Alloview is an ed tech company that provides software for K-12 school districts and manages analyzing spending. So in our next meeting, we will present Alloview in real time, so we'll go through it, show it to you, what it looks like, and how it makes it visual. January is a busy month. This is when schools and directors present their proposals to me and my superintendent's cabinet. This year, we are adding explicit solicitation of other voices early in the process by launching a survey, visiting LPAC and CPAC meetings, incorporating budget discussions in the teacher and principal cabinets, and hosting a budget forum. Please remember, in January, we will only have forecasted numbers and scenarios based on enrollment alone, which we will present at the December school committee meeting. The governor's official state budget's not released until the end of January. February and March will be extremely busy for us as we curate all the ideas directly tied to our priority areas. Our goal is to present to you, the school committee, our official proposal budget by mid-March. The budget feedback process will remain open from mid-March to April 9th. At this school committee meeting, we will host the public hearing on the proposal and seek your vote on approving the FY27 budget. After this, I will visit city council to present our budget statement letter. This image is from last year, or rather, this school year. Public school funding in Massachusetts is a partnership between the state and the city designed to ensure equitable educational opportunity for all students. Funding flows from enrollment to state aid to our schools, highlighting transparency and city partnership. Chapter 78 is a state formula ensuring equitable education across communities. Student Opportunity Act enhances equity with adjustments for communities like ours who have specialized needs. Our goal each year is to ensure these resources strategically align our spending to our need, maintaining transparency, and stewardship of public funds. On this slide, you can see the three priority evidence-based practices for the Student Opportunity Act investments. We have committed to investing in MTSS, high school post-secondary planning, and expansion of dual language over the next three years. Each dollar in the FY27 budget must connect to one of our five strategic priorities. This ensures our resources are not just managed, they're mobilized. We will engage in several conversations throughout the winter and spring in different settings to ensure we are leveraging stakeholder input. I will return in December with different possible scenarios based on our preliminary numbers. This is an enormous responsibility, and I'd like to celebrate the city's commitment and partnership given the size of our, of this year's budget. If we remain focused on sustainability, equity, and transparency of our public dollars, we will be able to serve our students. That's the process. Thank you.
Member Castellanos.
Superintendent Cohen, thank you so much for the explanation and the process that we're going to be entering, so that's echo. I really liked the impact assessment, like the prelim work. I really liked how you baked that in. I think that was something that was missing at the last budget cycle. Honestly, I think the timelines too, I think you adjusted that, which is really, I think, long overdue. I think us doing our budget that late, I think it's been something that I think over the years that we've noticed that it's been really difficult, especially for the times of, you know, the posts for our, for the, for new positions and when people are leaving, I think that's something that I think is, it's a good idea. We're going into really difficult fiscal times, it's not unknown. Will we be able to, I think when I say we, as a school committee, as folks who are going to be overseeing the budget and that decision at the end, will we be part of, I say, like quarterly updates? How will we be updated? Just at school committee meetings, I think there's going to be, obviously, there's going to be tough decisions that have to be made, and I can see part of the impact assessment, we're going to be bringing everyone to the table, which is critical. How, I guess, how will communication look?
So I think it's important to have it in the open meeting in terms of we can share with the, where we are along the process. The crunch time for us is from January to February, when the curation of all of those ideas and then aligning them to our priorities, and then to your point, making those hard decisions about what is going to fall by the wayside and what we're actually going to actually elevate to you, is going to happen very quickly. And so we can, I can be communicating the direction that we're going in, but this involves the union, both, we want union involvement at the table as well as we're talking about, like, you know, what we have to focus on and what we're going to have to not fund because we won't, we potentially won't have the funding. So we can look at, I want to be that transparent with, you know, the internal, my internal team as well as my teachers, so it looks like we could do sort of like an update and then, but then it would be a standing item at our, at our monthly meetings, just kind of where we're heading and what it looks like, yeah. But it's going to be fast. So January, the deputy, the, excuse me, the department leads and the principals, they present, but don't, at that time, they also don't know yet what our budget is because we generally don't get it until the, you know, February. So, and then it's a quick turnaround.
So, and then it's a quick turnaround in terms of, you know, through the lens of what are they also going to decide that they have to take off of their proposals? Does that make sense?
No, it does, it does.
It just happens very quickly, there's a lot of looping back and looping back.
I just.
You also have, sorry, Brian, sorry, Member Castellanos, you also have that period when we present in March, and then it's an open discussion from March to April.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm more concerned about the priorities. So I know the priorities, how we shift, they're going to be very, like you said, it's very fast. And I think it comes at us as school committee members very fast. And I just would like to make sure that we set up more like, 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 not like speed bumps for us to digest that. Because it's very important for us to, to know what we're voting on. And fiscally, I know Kevin does a great job providing all the, like, the logistics with the, with the numbers, but priorities are very important and just greater big picture, right? Our long-range goals and how we can support everyone at the table with that time, especially if it's going to be, again, we're going to be making really difficult decisions, I imagine. So I appreciate that, thank you for the clarity.
I'm Reed. Thank you, Superintendent, this is great. Glad we, you know, we talked about some of these things over the last few years, and it's really refreshing to see it, and it's, it's great. One question, I know we've spoken about, I think over the last year or two, moving to a more, is it a, the technical term, a school-based budget? Is that still sort of in the, in the works, or is it more of a, I guess, traditional budgeting system? I'm not, I'm not sure the technical terms, but.
Yep, that's a good question. In December, when we show you Alavue, Alavue, right now, we have it set up as per the school. The, what Mr. McQ and I have discussed is the complication with a school-based budget. If you took the entire budget and just broke it to the school, we have an entire administrative team that is connected to that, and we have not landed on what is the exact formula
Sure.
that counts for that piece, right? So when you're thinking about like assistant directors of curriculum.
How do you, yeah.
How do you, what you write, exactly. What is the calculation for that based on each school? So we still do have the traditional side of how to, but we work in service to schools. We just don't have a mathematical formula for that.
I think that makes sense, thank you. Member Gator.
So Superintendent Cohen, the principals will still have input, it will sort of be like school-based, what they need in their buildings? It's going to be, that's going to be the same? And is it going to be transparent, like we were going to, it was going to change to a transparent budget? Like we could read it online banking?
Alavue, that's what you're talking about, yeah. So in December, what we're going to bring to you, and the presentation in December is going to be based on our exact enrollment numbers. If we do those calculations, we'll present three potential scenarios. If it was a level-funded budget, this is what it would look like. If there was, if we were offered less funding, this is what it could potentially look like. But at that meeting as well, we're going to walk you through what Alavue looks like. So, so you can see, it's really a visual representation of how much is staffing, how much is the, you know, supplies? And you can see it, yeah, in Alavue, you can see it visually. And that's what the principals are working with right now. But for the, to your, to your question, for the principals and for the department leads, the process of coming to the table with what they need, what they, what they need to meet their goals and meet their priorities, which are our priorities, has not changed.
And I was wondering about grants. Where, where would grants fall into our budget? Like if there's a possibility of something being cut, how will we know that grants are picking things up?
Yep, so Title I is supplemental, it can't supplant the, the actual budget. So that comes later in the spring. Spring to summer is when we're looking at title. And we, and then competitive grants just sit outside of that. But we won't, we'd be looking at the, at the title grants after the Chapter 70. But you, but we, we can't put something into titles that would supplant what we have to fund with the Chapter 70 money.
I understand that, but what I'm asking is.
Yeah, how does it work in conjunction?
Like the grants that are being written, and then hiring of people via the grants? So that we don't necessarily lose people.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was just wanting.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Great, well, thank you Superintendent Cohen. I think this is going to be, as everyone talked about, a challenging cycle. And I know that we have been working to, to prepare for that. The, you know, the city team and the school team are always working together, and we've, we've, last couple of months have even, I think, stepped that up in preparation for this, for this cycle. There is, as always with these, with these budgets, it's, it's hard to look ahead because it's, the, the, the revenue, the amount of the budget that we have is really dependent on what the, the state aid looks like. And that is variable and ultimately a political decision that, that the state makes. But there's a lot that on the, on the expense side that we can predict and, and, and just what, what it would cost to do what we did this year, again, next year. And so I think we'll get some good visibility into that in, in December so that we can at least have a sense of what, what the different scenarios might be that we're, that we're faced with in January when, when we do get the actual amount and allocation. And of course, as always, that happens in parallel with the advocacy that we do on the, on the revenue side that we're, have been and will continue to push, particularly with respect to the enrollment decrease, a solution that would, would try to hold the district harmless. We've been working with different state groups as well as peer districts to, to push on that at the state level, and we'll, and we'll continue to do that to maximize the, the opportunity. But yeah, a lot of, a lot of important work ahead and appreciate the update, so. All right, we have a couple donations, what's the recommendation of the superintendent?
Yes, I'm always going to recommend that we accept donations.
This is their, is their, "A motion to approve Anita Envolo King's Lynn board to breed middle school in the amount of $1,000 for essential food items for the breed community."
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ayesha habit, and next to the Ganon Golf Course to Fallon Elementary in the amount of $250.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ayesha habit, thank you so much, Ms. Vellou in the King's Lynn, as well as Ganon Golf Course. Next, we have superintendent goals.
Okay, hello again. Tonight, I present my professional practice goals for this accelerated year as a superintendent. I'd like to remind you that under normal circumstances, a new superintendent would have one full year to accomplish certain process goals that reflect their commitment to the role and to the district. Because I'm an overachiever, I am presenting to you what I endeavor to accomplish in six months. Just as I asked for patience and grace a few weeks ago when I presented my entry plan, I'm hoping to solicit from you a few extra brownie points and support in what I present here tonight. As I've said before and will continue to say, excellent instruction is our social justice strategy. A great education is the equalizer on the playing field of an inequitable world. I believe instructional leadership is how we stabilize, how we build belonging, and how we deliver equity for every child in Lynn. Hence why my focus areas are belonging, instruction, and relationships, all driving toward establishing stability. To that end, my first goal is centered on excellent instruction and action steps we already have underway. I plan to leverage the Principal Director District Instructional Leadership Team and the Executive Leadership Team meetings as the foundational space for aligning our practices with professional development. By the end of this school year, I will deliver a P D plan mapped to our instructional priorities, a district look-for walkthrough tool that has been iterated on several times already, and the feedback from principals and teachers that will inform next year's action items. My theory of action is that excellent instruction is well-resourced classrooms with well-supported teachers, which will stabilize the system during this time of transition. My second goal is firmly rooted in belonging and relationships. In the next six months, I plan to launch two councils, a staff advisory council and a family and community engagement council. These councils will advise me on our plans to host family partnership events, administer a staff climate survey, and publish a Voices of Lynn report summarizing this year's endeavors. The feedback solicited in these meetings and the survey will inform our future plans for making Lynn Public Schools an even stronger and more aligned district. So that's it. Any questions on those goals or feedback?
So I, I just want to echo what you mentioned about the, the quick turnaround in this, so I appreciate that. You know, we, we take this role really seriously in evaluating the superintendent and need the goals to do that. And to turn, to turn that around quickly and to get us sort of on track to have this ability to evaluate based on goals is, is really helpful, and so we appreciate it. There's no questions, I think, I think it would make sense for us to vote to accept them if someone likes to make a motion.
Make a motion to accept Superintendent Cohen's F Y '26 goals.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan, absent. Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right, next item, we have executive session.
I make a motion to move the regular session to executive session.
Second.
Yep, to approve executive session minutes for meetings held on September 11th, October 9th, October 16th. Discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to L S A. A involved strategy in open meeting may have detrimental effect on a compromised bargaining positions of the body as well as contract negotiations with non-union personnel interim deputy superintendent.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan, absent. Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Motion to return the regular session?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan, absent. Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Executive session, we took a vote that we'd like to ratify, to approve a collective bargaining agreement with the Lynn School Administrators Association for three years with 3% cola.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan, absent. Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
No further business?
Motion to close, most of the journey.
Second.
All in favor?